Thank you, Christian. Okay, yes, as Christian mentioned at the last meeting, we had, we were kind of debating on whether or not the opioid treatment facilities should be, as it was, if we put it into the resolution form, that it would be in the office institutional, and then it rolls up into the office institutional apartment. And we also had talked about having it possibly in the highest of the commercial districts, C5. So right now, we had it as principal uses, is what we were suggesting. But then the more some of the members started thinking about it, "Oh, hi, thank you." No, I thought I could put it under. It was a health rating. So situated. Our first topic is the opioid treatment facilities.
Okay.
So then what, we started thinking about this in August, what might be a good way to demonstrate where they might be? So what you have now is that the members on the board, those of you in the audience have a big map that has all of those zones there. But what the members have is one side that has office institutional, office institutional apartment, and then C5 on one side. They're kind of highlighted, everything else is just gray. And then on the back side, we show what if it, what if we expanded it to be C4? And then again, you may, through our discussion, may want to decide whether we think it's a good idea to have it in a district such as OIA, which has housing in it. You know, do we want to separate those uses or not? If you recall, back when we first were looking at this discussion, it was thought, well, they didn't want it in C1 and C2, which are more neighborhood space, smaller. We could feel it was very much like any other clinic or medical facility, and those tend to be in the hospital area or office institutional. You know, C4 is a district that just kind of surrounds the neighborhood downtown. It is also on all the main thoroughfares, such as Center Street Church, Main, and Delaware, kind of in all directions. So if you notice on the maps, our districts that we're looking at puts the potential opioid treatment facilities all on the major thoroughfares, is kind of the gist of it.
Is Ohio Health and Center Street, are they, they're currently, they're in C4s right now, right?
Uh, they are actually in the C3.
They're C3?
C3 for the immediate downtown direction.
Okay.
And you know, the treatment facility that we do have that did, you know, kind of spark the conversation is also in that C3. But there was quite a lot of, you know, opposition to whether that was desirable for more to go in. That's why at the time, we were trying to stick it more in the higher level commercial districts and that medical complex type areas.
If I remember right, wasn't our discussion, I mean, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the different areas, and we kind of came to a resolution or that OI and OIA was kind of a halfway point between where this side wanted to go and this side wanted to go, and we kind of met in the middle. Do I remember that right?
You do.
You do.
So that, for me, I mean, I would, I would stand by what we decided that day on the OI and OIA.
Okay. No, from this, from me, that's, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with standing by what we decided that day.
Well, I think they sent it back to us because they,
The number, it was four to three.
Because of the numbers, it was a four to three.
Yeah. And then when, for the last meeting, when there were, there were members not in attendance, it was explained that the A in OIA stands for apartment. So some were of the opinion that while they may personally not have a problem with that, this is me, members here who were gracious enough to have that long conversation and come to an understanding may have a very real problem with putting an apartment on top of a treatment facility. If you're, if you're stating, we all understand that, but I want to stand by what was originally, I will support that fully by what was originally. Because like you said, I feel the original conversation was very in-depth and very gracious back and forth for both sides, and that we were able to actually compromise. And I felt it was a fantastic conversation. So if you're saying, let's stick by what we set them,
I'm saying that's what my opinion is.
I'm fine, I agree with you.
I'm not trying to voice my opinion on other people.
No, I, I agree with your opinion. I just, the reason it came back is the numbers, but the thing that's going to happen, Mr. Mayor, is they're going to get the same numbers when it goes back to them again.
Probably.
So it was five the last time? It's going to be five this time, in my opinion, but...
No, I think that was, wasn't that four?
Four to three.
It was four to three the last time.
Well, if, you know, if you all should choose in the same direction, I think we'll have enough to satisfy what they wanted or what they were looking for.
I mean, I personally, I'm going to leave it open for other people to voice their opinions, but I personally agree that we should stand by what we compromised on the last time and just resend them what we send them with an extra vote to make them more comfortable in passing it forward.
So where does that put these facilities at? And was that, um... And was that before I started, or was that this first? Okay.
So this is, we put them all here in all of the...
These?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You want to ask? Do you have...
No, that's, I just was, yeah, nope. I just wanted to know where, where.
Physically, weren't they?
Yeah.
They would be the...
I'm still learning how to read all this stuff.
Does anybody else have any questions on this one? From the audience? If you, I can give you mine. You'll see exactly where it is.
All right. We've got more.
So it's the side without the blue?
There, and then also the yellowish. Okay.
And the greens at the top.
Yeah. This was if they had it coming out of C5, which was commercial, but right now, we're not talking about this, would be only the C4. Okay, so those are specific. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Did anybody in the audience have any questions over...
I think I'm pretty out of the loop on this one.
There you go. What do you got?
So are you ruling out the C5s completely then?
No.
As a compromise, or is the C5s going to be in with the OI?
It's the C5s, OIA and OIs. So C4s are out.
But are you, do you want it to be the C5? I just want to double check, because right now, I want to, I need real quick, uh...
Isn't that what it says right now?
Like, right now, the wording is OI and OIA.
I want to make sure it doesn't roll up into the C5.
Yeah. OIs and OIs.
OI.
Yeah, only. So we just have to put the language in.
Oh, okay.
In each spot, say, "Accept, accept."
Okay, so... OI, you say rolls up into the C3.
Uh, yeah, OI rolls up into OIA, which rolls up into C3 and et cetera.
I'm sure, I want to make sure.
It's, so...
No, those are just the residential things. Oh, wait, man, you're right. Sorry. Okay, you are right. And that's why I bring the book. So in the C3, it does say everything that's allowed in the OI district is allowed in there. But since we don't want it to be in the C3, we would then say, "Accept recovery," you know, or, excuse me, "accept opioid treatment facility." And then I guess, let's clarify, then C3 rolls into C4 and C5.
So if you take care of it, the C3, you take care of it.
Right, but we didn't, yes.
And then you have to add it again in C5.
Then you have to add it back in.
You only have to add it in C5 if you walk out.
We don't, I think our intention is OI, OIA, excluding C3.
It says it already in the ordinance. I have a copy of the ordinance.
Yeah, there's a, there's a copy of the ordinance on the back.
It says opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities limited to OI and OIA only as principal permitted uses. Naturally, that would be...
Right.
Because we've said "only," because we're new at this.
So we're not rolling into any commercials?
No.
I just want to be clear, so it's part of that.
Do we have that?
Yeah, well...
It looks just prettier.
It's that, that's the text.
Okay.
If you want to see this.
Yeah, what's that? Do we have this in our pocket?
You can have it if you want. Just kind of shows you how those things move.
Do we need to add anything else other than the text that's in I that says, "Only as principal permitted uses"? I mean, do we have to address the C5 somewhere else and say we're excluding?
No, I mean, I guess if, right now, this way, it would not...
This would not include C5.
You take it out of C3, then it doesn't roll up into C4.
Right. So what we'd do is we would amend this ordinance a little bit to just make sure that C3 says things in the OI and thing except. Starts rolling, and that would stop the rolling. That's the only way this, this resolution would change slightly.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what we're talking about is excluding one specific zone because of the way zoning works. If it's good there, it's good everywhere below it as well. So we want to make sure that we're saying it is not good here or anywhere else except OI and OIA. And we're just, we're just chopping out the language on how that would look, just so, okay.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
Well, I think the motion would be in the form of this committee recommends opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities to be limited to OI and OIA only as principal permitted use.
I'll second that. Would you please take the rule?
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunston?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bullins?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Awesome.
All righty. Now, we are moving on to new business. It's the signed Hoyle Street Vacation Application, an application from the Ohio Department of Transportation to vacate a portion of Hoyle's street.
All right. Members should have the staff report. You'll also have some additional information provided by ODAT recently. There, the applicant, because what they're trying to do is a safety project, Kenton's, which is 309. So you're going to want to look for this staff report, and then we'll have your two handouts, one kind of longer than the other that has the... And do we have anybody from ODAT? Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so this is, uh, 309, and just past Five Points, I guess, there, yeah, at Center Street, West Center Street. And we should make recommendations to City Council, so this is one of the items that kind of goes on. At the time we wrote this, we didn't have all the same information we have today. But this is, if you look on your second page, Cayuga goes north of, of Center Street. And then this Hoyle is just a very short road. In fact, parts of it have already been vacated, and it runs parallel to the CSX lines. And so what the issue is, is that when people come out there, they're going to be very close to that intersection of the road where the, the safety signals are. So our, again, previously, it was extended 125 more feet westward, and it terminated. So you can kind of see that out through the maps. Arguments in favor, it could prove the safety. And there are dangerous intersections, Center and Baywood Street. Last, right away, specifically with the vacation, half of the land will go to, in this case, a railroad, the other to the property owner to the south. Arguments against the vacation. At the time, we weren't certain exactly why. I know a lot of people kind of use that as a shortcut to get around the intersection. And so it was originally designed as a connector for South Cayuga Street to Kenton, so that the residents to the south could avoid their, you know, you know, the Five Points intersection. However, is the reason ODAT wants to close it is to eliminate that shortcut. So we were in favor of granting the vacation. One thing I would want to, I guess, request of ODAT and the rail commission, that neighborhood in particular, we deal with them often, with their neighborhood association, they're plagued by those trains and stoppages significantly. And so people are stuck in those, sometimes out. The neighbors have been requesting, like even just like a bus stop-type shelter, something see-through where you're safe within and can be visible, but at least to be out of the elements, because they're just stuck there. And we have a lot of, you know, we have residents with wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs, et cetera, if it had an outlet, that'd be great, because they'll run on juice before they get across. And that's also a desert, so the main source of business for a lot of people is really the motor mark across the street. So we have a lot of pedestrian traffic going in that direction. So while we are happy to have some improvements, we're kind of glad that it's with other, you know, government or utility entities, that if there are additional right-of-way, if perhaps a shelter could be worked into that, probably on both sides of this. And I'll let you explain the design with what we understand. So what I have here and...
Yeah, very, very simply. Primarily, the project is upgrading the signal at Kenton and Center, installing some preemption, so that we don't have the issue of, you know, when the signal's red, you don't have people queuing up onto the tracks. So it's going to be connected with the railroad signals so that they're, in a way, communicating, so you don't have that issue. And then the other two parts are closing off Hoyle Street there, so you don't have vehicles. So when they, so with Hoyle Street now, they're, the vehicles are actually coming out behind the gates, so they can just turn left right onto the tracks. We have that same issue north of there, but there, it's, it's coming down from Senate. There is a section there that is also entering the Kenton Avenue behind the gates, but there's two, or there's two outlets there. So one is going to be closed. I think it's on the, the area's highlighted in yellow there. And then the street's just going to get realigned slightly to the north, so that people can, can make that left turn there, maintain some access.
Is that going to be a one-way out, or is it going to be two-way there at that access point? Or is that still undecided?
Which one, north?
Oh, no, Senate.
Yeah, it should, yeah, it should be two, two ways, so people can come in and get out through there.
So what happens to Cayuga Street? Because right now, if I'm reading this correctly, and if I recall from working in that area, Hoyle curves right around, and it's continuous. There's no stop sign, there's no, hey, we're making, your road's changing, it's continuous. It rolls right into Cayuga and right down. So if we, if we vacate that, you're going to close that off, which makes Cayuga either a one-way in, and then are you, were you doing a cul-de-sac back there so people can actually turn around and come back out?
Yeah, you know, it'll pretty much be turning into a cul-de-sac, so it's just a, you know, a dead end there.
And just a second question, and I, it has very little to do with this, but as ODAT, are you guys at the same mercy as the train, as the railroads, as the city is? Because this intersection in particular, they park. I don't mean they, they don't mean they just like, hey, like they stop for a minute. They park. Like, this is like their train yard, and it closes a road. So you probably can't do, I'm not asking you to do anything. I'm asking you, like, do you have any more say with, hey, how about if we're going to work with you on redoing this? Don't park on the tracks. Like, we get it, but just don't park there.
Yeah.
Like, move back far enough if you need to park, but it doesn't drop the signal, but doesn't drop the closing gate, and people still have access to get back and forth. I mean, we could both, everybody can make that request, but whether or not they do it, I don't know. I say... If they decide to stack onto their northbound line, yeah, okay, I'm probably putting them in the car, but if they decide to curve around on the northbound line instead of just continuing east, that whole neighborhood is... It's landlocked instantly. You can't get out of there.
Yeah.
Because, because if you try to go the back way, they're down so far that they've blocked off the back way. So you literally are landlocked.
Yeah.
And you're stuck, you're at the mercy of, of them figuring out what they want to do.
Yeah.
And I know what mine is.
We, we probably have as much power as the railroads.
Thank you.
It's an issue, because it's, you know, it just goes back to the fact that, you know, they were, they were there first, and it's just, it's always been a tough thing to work with them. I work as the district's railroad coordinator also, so I get it. And I mean, just east of here too. I mean, we, we did that overpass on 309, right on the east side of Marion there. Because, I mean, there, there's really no other, you either go over top or through them, and if you, you know, if you need to go, you know, past them, it's, you're at their mercy. It's...
How about an overpass here?
I was going to say, how do we get an overpass? Yeah.
I know, it's big ass, but you can...
Yeah.
I mean, then you don't have to worry about the signal upgrade.
Yeah.
I think the last time, I think the last time they studied it was like 1965. We have a study from back then where they didn't really think there was room for an overpass.
Yeah, this one, I didn't, I mean, I haven't seen any studies or anything that does kind of look at it. I mean, it's tricky, because you have a lot of residential around it, and you're talking about a significant raise of the roadway through there. The 309 on the east side was a lot easier, because that's all commercial, it was, you know, nice and clear, there was nothing around. You know, this, this would definitely be a much trickier area. This is about at least, you know, the best kind of thing we can do to improve safety, you know, that's kind of within our reach.
Can I get your name for the record?
Yeah, it's Danilo Puozzo. D-A-N-I-L-O. Last name, P-U-O-Z-Z-O.
Thank you for listening to my frustrations with the...
Oh, I know, I know, I feel you. I work with them all the time, so I know what you mean.
So when we, it's going to, basically, it's going to be a cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And will, so all of Hoyle Street will be ODAT. Am I correct? Like, this, because usually it'll be...
It's just going to be land.
Usually, it's the south six, whatever, if it's 12 feet wide, the south six feet would go to the owner behind this, this guy that owns this little convenience store.
Yes.
But, and then you guys would get the other part.
No, like, ODAT's not getting any part of this one. It's, it's going to go to the CSX. It's going to split between the two properties, basically. The ones to the south and CSX, yeah, I know.
I would like them to come here and ask me for it.
We are. We are acquiring CSX property to the north of there for all our, the work that we're doing on, uh, it's, it's definitely coming through the north. I can't remember where.
And Hocking.
Hocking, right, because Hocking is also an intersection, because technically, all of Hocking Street is within railroad driveway.
Right.
So we're acquiring a portion, the portion that we're requiring is going to go to the city, so we're not keeping it. I know we had, had some discussion with some folks at the city about acquiring the rest of it, if they were willing to, you know, just, you know, pay, pay for that amount, but I don't believe there was any appetite there, so I think it's going to stay as is. But at least that portion will not belong to the city as opposed to CSX.
Would they trade?
I want to make a safety bet, Silver Street. While we're hitting ODAT up for stuff, we have that little area right there you're asking for shelters, and we're talking about people passing through in wheelchairs and that sort of thing. Maybe we could get a little walk path or something, so people could ride their scooters or walk through there.
Sidewalks.
Over to, I know Subway's a popular place for, I live in that area. So Subway's a popular place for people to get food and motors, the motor mark, people get through there. So, you know, they, if they're going to have to go up and around the Five Point intersection, which would be pretty dangerous, and there are motorized cars, so if they could cut through...
I think they just, she just means...
Watch the traffic from, that would help them.
I would.
Thank you.
I would like to add to this as well, so...
Could you step to the podium and say your name for the record, please?
I'm Brandon Fisher with Penosco Management.
Oh.
So the convenience store doesn't actually own that property. I, I own that little sliver of property, and I own the property on the other side of the street as well. So, one, as interesting as it is, I don't believe that there's room with the existing road to do a cul-de-sac. It's extremely tight now. So I am in support of the vacation of Hoyle Street. That cut through is very dangerous. I probably see it more than any of you see it. And because it comes out behind the gate, generally, what we get is screaming vehicles to try to beat the train.
Yeah.
And they have no regard. I'm surprised, honestly, that we haven't seen more death and destruction at that particular intersection. But because the train does block that road significantly, people think it's like their death to get through. So as I also keep my eyes on this property more than most, I think we all can agree that the motor mark and drive-through area isn't Marion's finest area. And so I have some insight always by way of traffic to understand what's going on in that area. I.e., we may get a phone call or a text message saying, hey, there's a vehicle back here, or there's a suspicious person back here. And local law enforcement also uses that. I see them patrol through that area frequently because it's not safe. I also own the scrapyard that's there. It's, I lease the, the ground to the scrapyard, but I also own the scrapyard. And that's not the safest place in the city. So my concern is, if we close Hoyle, it opens up the opportunity to create a little harbor back there that illicit activity can go on in front or around my property and my business, which I don't think would be attractive for Marion. So as I agree and with the vacation of Hoyle, I almost think it would serve the community better to vacate Hoyle and Cayuga and make that a private property that no one's coming back there. Since we're on the thought of making requests from ODAT, I think that...
It's pretty good, Chuck.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would, you know, it would be conducive for ODOT to fence in that area to make it a no-go zone where we don't have to worry about people being back there. We don't have to, I, I think there's not much reason for people to pull back there and just be turned around. It's gonna be a very temporary solution. I mean, it's gonna be a very temporary use. People are gonna go back there, they're gonna turn around, it's gonna be a traffic jam for the first X amount of times until people do it, and then it's just gonna become a dead end.
Really, the only access that anybody would go to back there would be to your foot.
Correct. And so I think by fencing that in and, you know, us being able to consume that property, we can kinda secure the, the perimeter of it, and then we know if anybody's inside the perimeter of it, they shouldn't be there. So, um, I, I think I would be willing to accept that additional, um, responsibility of that property. And I, and I think it would also create, the, the sidewalks are gonna be better used coming out of the, the motomart and the drive-through. Whether a shelter gets put up there or not, I don't know. Uh, but that is, I think, what I, what I would like to suggest regarding that intersection.
Um, just real quick. So, once, if everybody says yes, we would like to vacate Hoyle Street begrudgingly to the railroads, um, then you would own the properties on either side of Cayuga Street, correct? You'd own the scrapyard and the property that would be the, um, convenience mart. That would, all that is owned by you.
I own, I own all that, yeah. So, the convenience store doesn't, they don't own any of that adjacent property.
So then, I, I agree with your assessment that once Hoyle Street is closed, Cayuga kinda like, its usefulness to anybody goes away, really.
Correct.
So, if you were to go through and put in the proper paperwork to have that vacated to you, I would be willing to hear that and have them give a report and, and go through. I see your point and I agree with you. It's just because that's not brought forward now, I can't, we, we can't, we can't really do anything with it. But it is a very good suggestion because the street does die, basically die.
I, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that, um, as the Ohio Department of Transportation has applied to vacate Hoyle and, and it is a continuous road. So, it's not a, um, Hoyle is not a left or right-hand turn per se. I don't know at what point in time that it changed from a T to a radius. But as it is now, it, it, it is absolutely a radius turn, so it's kind of a continuation. Um, I think that the path of least resistance is probably ODOT to secure that, or maybe they can amend their request to vacate that. Um, I, I would like to see it as one operation and, and not, um, kind of a subsequent operation. So maybe you can speak to that, maybe you can do that or amend this, but I, I think that it would be more difficult for either Benassi Management or Friction Metals to make the application to vacate Cayuga. Um, and you can see on the map that, that it is a radius, it's a continuation of Hoyle.
I've, when I, I worked for Johnson's property, so...
Yeah, you, you're familiar.
Yes, I'm, I'm of the belief that part of that road is brick, but I can't prove it.
It is, in fact, it is.
And it's, it's an interesting ride at five-thirty in the morning, so...
I don't, I don't know. Everyone would, would, I, I think we put more red tape to it if we have ODOT do the asking rather than Friction Metal, I don't know. Do you have an opinion on that? I mean, is ODOT gonna say, well, we have no interest in Cayuga once it stops, so we're really not gonna... Because, yeah, Cayuga becomes irrelevant, I mean, Cayuga, the only person that's gonna serve is him and his yard.
This was brought up too, so this was part of the discussion because when we looked at it, we noticed that the, the owner of the, well, it was you, but yes, the same person on both sides of Cayuga there. So it was brought up, um, with the fact that, um, to, to, to put in a vacation, um, application need to be, uh, in a, in a budding resident, right? So because, uh, you know, state property butts up to Hoyle's, they were able to do that. It was brought up and the city did mention, you know, about, yeah, you know, this would make sense, you know, for, to just vacate the rest of Cayuga and just turn it over to the, the property owner on either side of there. Um, but we were just limited to doing the Hoyle Street vacation because that's the property that's budding up to, it, it, I mean, it is one continuous road there, but then...
But it's actually two streets, so, yeah.
So that was as far, that's what we could have done, so that's what we put in. I know it was brought up and I'm sure, you know, it would be more than reasonable. Uh, but yeah, that, that was the scope of our, you know, what we were able to do was survey that area, put in the application for Hoyle's and not, you know, Hoyle's ain't Cayuga.
Understood.
Yeah, that was brought up, and it, and it, yeah, it makes complete sense and that, that area can be fenced off.
Correct.
Got another idea.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, uh, just, can I ask you, you weren't really gonna build a cul-de-sac back there, were you?
It's, yeah, it's not quite gonna be built.
I mean, you were gonna build a...
We're gonna be removing...
You were just gonna make it a dead-end street.
Right.
Okay.
I thought they were gonna do a roundabout.
The thing that could be done, I believe, would be if ODOT was paying to survey that, this, this could be amended and the city could be, this planning commission could recommend, could be, the city could be the applicant to, to, uh, do, uh, Cayuga. I'm in favor. Then it would go through at the same time we were talking about this.
But the city, even if we're not a property owner, we could still be the applicant for...
We were trying to get the city to be the applicant for Hoyle's. It's, it's something possible and that we ended up doing it, but, yeah.
I'm sure this project started quite a couple of years ago, so... Uh, 'cause I, I, I mean, logically for us, to me, it makes no sense not to, not to do both. So, I, I think that, uh, we could talk, like Ken said, we could talk to the engineers department and maybe have them become the applicant for...
Would they become the applicant or would actually the city planning commission, just like they're initiating the zoning changes?
Just city planning, but it'd be nice if ODOT paid for the survey. I mean, unless the city want, I don't, you know, I mean, it's...
Doesn't the city already own this Cayuga Street? I mean, it's within the city limits, so doesn't it, isn't it already?
It's city property, yeah.
So how can the city vacate something they already own?
There, there's a, there's a section of the O R C. that provides for the city to terminate its rights to alleys and things like that of their own volition, nobody has to petition them for it.
So we could just give it to them?
In theory, yes. I'd have to, I'd have to look at the O R C. and see exactly what it says, but there's a section that, you know...
As long as it's worth less than a hundred bucks.
In this, you know, uh, I guess Chase Street is an example. If, if we hadn't vacated Chase Street, the city could have said, we're not taking care of it anymore. We're gonna, we're gonna terminate it.
And then one more thing, instead of him getting to use it anyways, he's gonna, you're gonna have to pay taxes on it.
Not only for the taxes, which is the chief argument, the runoff, the, the, yeah, stormwater runoff is what, where the cost is now. Yeah, no, I think we pay seven hundred a month for that.
So, are we saying that at this point, the application in front of us, we're no longer considering because it's going to be amended? And the city is going to combine into the application to make Hoyle and Cayuga one application? Cayuga will go to the city? And then they'll, and then Hoyle will go to ODOT and on behalf of C.S.X. But to do that, ODOT, which he's not agreeing to, would pay for the survey for the whole thing so we can do this, is that what we're saying? That this, this legislation before us, we're no longer considering this?
No, you, you're considering this, but you, you can, you can have separate ones saying that you want at the same time, uh, vacate.
That's what I, I'd rather not.
I guess, the, the, the...
That's where my confusion comes in.
Paying for the, I was just seeing if they'd pay for it. Paying for the survey, I don't know if that's, in this overall thing, is that big of a deal, you know, uh? And so that would have to, this would proceed at the same time then, hopefully then?
It is...
The other one would proceed, this, you're, if you want to vote to initiate Cayuga, Cayoga, um, then, uh, Cayuga, then, um, that would proceed as, but it'd probably be two separate, I don't know if it'd...
I understand.
As you go up to the law director.
But it is my understanding that we as a planning commission aren't allowed to do that, because that's creating possible legislation to go before city council. We have to, we are only allowed to, to consider what is actually brought before us. And now Josh is gonna take over.
That's not true, it's just like zoning changes, you can initiate zoning changes.
Since you're the planning agent.
Well, this is your job.
Since you're the planning, uh, commission as well, just because we would accept a new road as well where we're coming in, you can also vacate, whether as an applicant or you can recommend, you know, vacating the city property. What we're speaking about, Josh, I'll take you off a second. Um, this is on the Hoyle.
Item number two.
Vacation. And so the discussion, is everybody pretty much in favor of, uh, vacating Hoyle? And this is over at Kenton, where Kenton and into Center Street intersect. And Cayuga goes north of Center Street, right by the scrapyard and the five points, uh...
Where it turns along the tracks, it becomes Hoyle. In the Kenton.
Hoyle runs alongside the, um, the railroad tracks more or less into city street. So that's a portion that was originally to be vacated because right now it comes out right in the middle of their safety zone where they're trying to correct and coordinate between the railroad tracks and the state, um, um, light signal, you know, traffic signals. Um, so the, while they're doing, the thought is Cayuga will now just dead end.
Cayuga becomes irrelevant because it dead ends in the Hoyle and...
And neighbor happens to own both sides, not only he would get half of the Hoyle, but he doesn't really want people coming in to that property anyway, because now it's gonna be a safety, you know?
Just friction, friction.
Dangerous, yes.
Yeah.
And so, so he happens to be on both sides of the street, so it would...
So a, as it was, the Ohio Department of Transportation looked at wanting to vacate both Cayuga and Hoyle's. Their jurisdiction only allows them to apply to vacate adjacent to their property. So because it came out on 309 and because Hoyle is dedicated its own road, even though it is a continuation into Cayuga, they didn't have the jurisdiction to request a vacation of Cayuga. Because it, they don't, they don't have, actually, Johnny. You, but you, but you do because...
Ninety-five. Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, type, touches Cayuga. Well, he said that they didn't have the ability, but may, maybe they do.
Yeah, it was a discussion that ended up ending, you know, and then we ended up just settling on, so it was a discussion with, I believe it was the planning commission there, this is what we ended up on, is just making, you know, do this project and then Cayuga would be up to, you know, either between the city or the, the property owner on either side there to...
So you have both sides of the street, I think, correct? I, I own, yeah, both sides. And you're looking to have it vacated, is that your wish? Yes, and so I think the recommendation's been made at this point for Marion City to electively vacate that or apply, whatever the process here is, to apply for that. And then our man at the ODOT is going to, uh, pay for it.
And we've asked for shelters, but shelters...
Yeah.
Hand it over, pass it.
They're talking about on, on 309 for that, for the loading station.
I'm, yeah, I, I don't have an issue with that. They're gonna close the one, I mean, on a glance, so you'll just end up taking maintenance of that particular road over and that'll relieve the city of it.
Yeah, I thi, I think, I think it's kind of a win-win for the community and for us and even for ODOT.
Keeps it from, yeah. He didn't want to become a den of inequity back there by people pulling back and parking and doing whatever.
Oh, yeah, they will.
Yeah, and they will, so...
I mean, at least that's, yeah, then, you know, our application would be forward and then there would be another, you know, from the city, you know, choosing to vacate Cayuga and giving it to the property owner.
And that's, that's my thought, is to move this forward, to go ahead with the plan as is, but then we'll talk to Mark about how we go about adding, how we go about vacating Cayuga as a separate issue from this one and, and moving that forward.
Because this will, it still takes some time for it to go out into construction.
Right.
Yeah, have acquisitions to make on the north side, so there's a whole lot of, um, maybe next year, but maybe the year after that, so, I mean, there's, there's gonna be some time before we get out there and actually close it off.
It's gonna take at least six weeks from here for it to get through council.
Right.
You said maybe next year?
Maybe at the earliest, yeah, but...
Man, you guys are going fast, it's next year.
Well, this project's been in the works for a long time here.
I, I was gonna say, C.S.X. I think put a pipeline together sometime mid summer next, next year.
Is, well, I think they have some, something separate though, yeah.
Understood.
Yeah, there must be something else, um, that they're doing, is here or they're just...
My only question is if first responders rely on that for anything? Like, I don't know if you could fit a fire truck down there? Okay, because I wouldn't want them to get stuck in the middle of that road and not be able to turn around.
I don't even think we had a snowplow in there.
They can't, they can't negotiate the turn?
No, that's a good point though, because we have, we have shot down vacations of alleys in the past because, um, the applicant has said, oh, well, you just get your fire truck in there and then have them do a three-sixty turn to get out and go back the other way. And we're like, that's not gonna happen, it's a continuous through fair, but that's a very good point. But, so, um, I don't have a problem with any of this, I, I agree that Cayuga Street becomes pointless once Hoyle is, is gone. I like that the mayor is open to this and he's willing to talk to the people he needs to talk to so that at the next meeting, which will most likely be next month, we will absolutely have the information we need to discuss vacating that and I agree with everybody, everything everybody said, it's good luck with that water runoff and, uh, moving forward, so...
You said though, when you, uh, once that construction starts, you're gonna have that light tied to the railroad crossing in some sort of way, so first responders hopefully won't be passed that light and stuck in that area. I would think that would be the goal, right, to keep that free of traffic between the railroad tracks and the intersection?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So they won't have that.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be bad unless they're going to Mr. Fisher's, uh, business back there.
It's a hot thing.
Yeah, I, I would agree, if you're a first responder in this community, you know that you're not gonna count on crossing those railroad tracks. The, the odds are heavily stacked against you.
Yeah.
You guys have a consensus? You know what you wanna do?
So, yeah, what we'll do is we'll just, so I'll make a motion to approve the vacation of Hoyle Street.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes had it. Thank you, gentlemen.
I also want to add on that subject, um, all of the utility easements will be maintained. And he says, you know, there's actually a lot of utilities in there, but they will be, uh, vacated.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three. This is a solar energy system zoning amendment. Proposal to amend Marion City zoning code to cover solar energy systems, i.e. solar fields. I, um, this subject recently came up in city council. I, I don't think, I, I had the impression that no one in city council knew it. I don't think anyone knew it, but it did raise some interesting questions about whether the city of Marion was desirous of having solar fields in a very limited amount of industrial ground that could be used for expansion if the city of Marion depends upon... If the city of Marion depends upon companies coming inside the city limits, and it does for a number of reasons. You probably don't want forty years' worth of solar panels set up on this ground. So I brought this to Evelyn. I think she's come up with some alternatives.
Right. I hope you all have a, kind of a little chart. You should have two things to focus on now. One will be a chart going from low strict to least strict as options. And then also there's some language under solar energy systems in more detail.
Can I help you?
Yes.
Hi.
Could you guys do those?
So.
No.
Go ahead.
On Mr. Daniel's point, even, there's no economic value to the city to bring this in whatsoever. They serve no purpose as far as jobs, I talked to Matt about it. They don't supply any extra electric to the city.
Right.
Unless you have a.
That's something different. I don't have.
One of the thoughts was to, wanted to make sure that they could be as an accessory use to an existing business or a home, let's say. You know, so you've got a house and it's accessory because it's serving the house. Either on the roof or in the yard. Or in a business, it's serving that business. They're plowing on their roofs or something. But that it's not as a principal use, meaning it's a whole.
Utility.
Utility scale. Now, cities do have the right to regulate them under fifty megawatts. But you don't, the Power Siding, Ohio Power Siding Commission has the right to regulate them over that size. So you only, unfortunately, you only get the smaller scale, unended. I'm sure forty-nine is plenty big, you know, megawatts if it were to be utility scale. And so the options are, you know, no big utility scale at all in the city.
I don't have that.
Yeah, I, I do not. I can't find the email. If I got the email, I didn't find it.
I don't have.
For more insight on that subject, fifty megawatts requires about average power absorption, about five hundred acres. And I, that's big. So if you were able to pass this, you know, a hundred acres, two hundred acres wouldn't produce enough electricity to be, to trump your zoning code and head down to Columbus and get the siding board to say it's a utility. So that's probably what we're aiming at, I would imagine, at least inside the city limits. And you're right, there's no, that I can see economic benefit to the city. There is to the county commission.
Right.
Million dollars the first stake that's driven. There is to the township, seven hundred thousand to them and Ridgedale School Systems for the one north side of, or Williamsport Road that is in the township outside the incorporated limits. But we wouldn't recognize any economic benefit if, for instance, they were to go at the end of Kellogg Parkway.
Yeah.
So.
One thing that is separate from the zoning, so let's say the discussion came up and there's even some pending legislation with regard to developing solar fields on brownfields and distressed areas. So since the city owns the landfill, they could, again, it always comes to city planning because it's public property. So even if we regulated it or prohibited solar fields in, for private property, the city still has a right to go through city planning if they wanted to put them, let's say, onto a old landfill.
If that wasn't the city.
Well, wouldn't they be chartered their own property if it, even if it's in the township?
Well, they, but, but say if it was, and, and if it was part of the city, if the landfill was in the city, yeah, they, they would have a right. It would go to the planning commission and city council because it's public, public property. Outside, no, that then goes by these other, the rules for the townships.
Even when it's publicly owned. I thought it was the highest legislative office.
I, I.
Final would say.
Yeah, I intend to check, double check that.
Field drakers consider brownfield areas?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we can put solar panels at field drakers if they want exclusive brownfields. I prefer not to have a solar field like eight miles from the house. I don't even live near it. I live about sixteen miles from the house. So.
So, okay, so what you have here, and again, this week, we don't have to solve this problem today, but I wanted to get the discussion going on. Did you get this? Um, so again, can't regulate them if they're over fifty megawatts. You do get to regulate them, which is what we're trying to decide, under fifty megawatts. Um, most strict would say it's, you know, only an accessory permitted use, you know, let's say no solar farms at all, you know, and then only if it's on a roof mounted, you know, in all the districts. You know, we don't want, maybe anybody's yard, we're just, you know, put it on the roof. A moderate would be roof or ground mounted in all the districts, but limited to location and size, especially in the commercial industrial. Because we wouldn't want it to be more than ten acres or something, you know. Again, it's trying to keep it so it doesn't become acres and acres. Least strict would be, you know, having it roof and ground mounted in all the districts. No limit, no size limit in the commercial industrial. Um, and then on the utility scale, solar fields, most strict would say not at all. We just don't want them. A moderate would say, well, maybe in an I-three district, but subject to Board of Zoning Appeals approval. And people recall when we annex, when the city annexed the gravel pit. That's the only thing in the city that's zoned I-three. So that being said, somebody would first have to zone something I-three and then come to the Board of Appeals.
So currently it can only go with the gravel pit?
Right. Less strict would be, you know, as a principal permitted use on the I-three or I-one-two, whatever, you know, you can kind of slide down in terms of the other industrial districts. We do have three industrial districts, light manufacturing, you know, medium level and the high, which is the excavating district. So. So that's what we can bounce off on some conversations. I'm curious what your thoughts on that.
Christian?
Um, so I'm, I read this ordinance while you were talking, was multitasking. What are we trying to accomplish? Like, are we trying to, like, update our zoning code to say now that solar's a thing that wasn't a thing when this zoning code was developed in nineteen forty-eight? That we can now update it? We want to have control over where.
You want to know specifically? I won't even go around the bush. I'll tell you exactly why I brought this up. There are currently seven solar leases throughout Marion Township, two of which are in the city. And those, if they're not released, we'll see if they're released or not. I.
Doubt.
Who knows? But the bottom line is, is I would not want to see the most valuable ground that the city at great expense, it, the state, the county, putting in the infrastructure, see that covered up with solar farms that doesn't create a job one. If there's no income tax from that, I think that was the deal. The city said, we're gonna involve ourselves in Kellogg Parkway. We're gonna give the land as a grant to a nonprofit. And we're gonna do this because our return on investment is jobs for the people in the city of Marion and therefore greater income tax and everything that goes along with that to repay the investment. Solar farms don't provide that. That is why it's been brought forward. Um, and these things are going wild. There are solar farms being propped up in places that you would, there's two in Marl County right now and more scheduled. You drive through Byhealy, you won't like the looks of them either.
Well, yeah, no, I have to dream about it.
I think, I think it does also bleed over into, we don't, we don't want somebody on Mark Street covering their whole front yard with solar panels.
You don't.
So, I mean, I think it's, like you said also, it's back to nineteen forty, you know, that, that wasn't thought of then and it's something we need to think about.
I know. And so I understand the two major ones that you're speaking of. Um, just my opinion, the way that the companies are handling themselves are not the most ethical. Like, you're gonna let, like, let it almost run out and then worry about it at the last minute? Like, that's kind of shady. But I just wanted to get a clarification. So this is just like everything else that we're doing. We're just trying to really dig down and say, like, listen, this is what, at this time, we see are necessary. We understand some people may want to have solar power in their homes and we have no problem with that. If you want to stick a solar, some solar panels on your roof and get a Tesla wall power thing, fantastic. If you, but as far as you saying, hey, I'm gonna do five hundred acres of solar panels, maybe in the future, and then maybe never do it, but claim that land at the last minute, we as a community and as a board would say, we don't really feel that that should happen. So now we're saying, we could, is five hundred the minimum? Is that, or because what I'm saying is.
Is what it is.
But I'm saying, to generate that much land, and if I'm wrong, please, I know you'll tell me I'm wrong. Um, you need about five hundred acres to generate the amount of power that needs to be any sort of.
Based on independent sources from the internet via Google.
Yeah.
So let, let me put that disclaimer. I really haven't talked to a qualified expert to find out. That's the general rule.
The, the leading Google, the leading Google data says.
They say about five hundred, four hundred and fifty of five hundred acres.
You could put a business park on five hundred acres. Easy.
Correct.
So.
Were, were you saying that over fifty megawatts then goes to the Ohio Power Commission? And you guys don't have jurisdiction to.
The Ohio Power Siding Board is specifically what they're called, the PUCO.
So, so what you guys are really trying to regulate right now is everybody under that threshold.
Correct.
Which would make sense. You don't want people doing it in the front yards. You don't want people covering acres with it. So go with a more strict general guideline for the big companies. And you got, I mean, that would be a, a bigger discussion, a, a, a more individual discussion rather than the under fifty megawatts. That's gonna be every homeowner, every local business guy.
Which under normal circumstances, I can, I, I see your point and I would agree with. It's just things and just government run glacier slow. So if we do the most strict and one day feel down the road, people are like, well, we need to change this. It's gonna be a Herculean effort to get it changed.
So you have one shot to get it right?
I'm saying, for most, we have one shot to get a sweet spot to where people feel like, okay, this is good or this is not good. And I want to make, and this is gonna sound really, I want to make equally number of people unhappy with this, which is when I'll know I've made the right decision. If too many people are like, that's what I'm talking about.
The unfortunate part is, is that there's all of us and then there's the oil companies that have now divested themselves into solar energy. So it's not really, you can't eat that out. I don't give a damn about Shell Oil. They can figure their own stuff out. They're big enough, you know. So that's really what I'm concerned with. I don't want to see that acreage ate up. It shouldn't have been. And as far as solar panels in your front yard, it's good to have clarification. It's probably covered in the zoning code anyway as green space and there's a certain minimum percentage of green space that one has to have. I don't think greens, of course, you could make the argument that the grass underneath the solar panel is green space.
I think if we had it pretty redundant, so I want to, I would want to state that it would not be permitted in the front yard and treated like, you know, they're accessory.
It probably, it probably wouldn't be permitted in the front yard because we have had drawn out conversations over four-foot-high fences.
True. Oh, yeah. You're right.
Naomi, one ahead.
Naomi, three, three sixty-five Silver Street. First, to put a solar panel in your house is incredibly expensive. My mother-in-law looked into it and most Marion's probably not gonna end up with solar panels on our roofs anytime soon. But if you could please clarify, what lots in the city, is, is it the lot out there by Cory Park?
Yes.
Where they're working right now?
Right now.
Well, they're like, I think they're probably inching into the substation that's out there.
Yeah.
Because the, the road to Cory Park is, it says access road.
No, that's not. So the, where we're speaking of right now, the right north side of.
Williamsport Road.
Williamsport Road. Of the Cory area, right. There's a thousand acres there.
And they're going, they're building their.
Right. That's in the township, correct. Okay. The parcels are in, actually the dual-rail industrial park just by, is it Sagabura?
Okay, so they're closer, they're closer to Fairground Street than they are. Actually, in the dual-rail park, there's some land there that currently has some. That's what I thought I had solved. So they're trying.
Ground around the quarry is covered in that lease.
Okay, so it is.
The north side of the quarry, in other words, quarry.
Right.
The road that comes from Williamsport and goes to the North Quarry. There's a north and a south quarry, quarry. The north side of that, all of that acreage up to the southern boundary of Williamsport is covered under a lease all the way over to Kellogg Parkway.
So if I, if I look this way, I see Poet, and I look this way, I see Cory, the land right here is covered by that part of the lease?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Because the, the road to Cory Park goes, they access road, we were on there, and there's excavator reserve, whatever.
They're probably, they're not probably installing solar panels. They're probably upgrading that. Maybe a substation or update the grid.
There's the substation right there on Fairground and Fountain Street.
Good thing.
Because, right, I'm around, I'm right under the quarry, I don't know. But that was our assumption when we went out there. So my next question is, if we say no solar panels now, now that they already have the lease on the land, and I don't think they're gonna, I mean, they're, they're working on the land right now. I don't think they're gonna say, eh, we're gonna.
It's not grandfathered in. At any time during that process.
So they, we can say no solar panels and they're shut down?
Yeah, unless you get, you give them a zoning permit.
Okay.
And then by the time you gave them a zoning permit, now they have an issue to stand in court, but as the.
That was my, I'm wondering if we were bringing ourselves into litigation because now we're, they, maybe bought that or.
I think it's been, I think it's been stated that, you know.
Have we seen the lease? I mean, we know, I, I know that it's not, so it's.
Not in there then that, that it's, you know, twenty, twenty-nine, they're gonna build solar panels or anything like that.
They don't give a specific date. They give what they call a discovery period of five years, then a thirty-year lease period, and then five, two five-year extensions thereafter.
And the first five years coming to an end?
It comes to an end in twenty-six.
So it's coming to an end?
They have, they have to, they have to make a claim that they're taking the extension of the thirty years, otherwise it, it ends. Is that correct?
Well, that's the second part of the lease that no one's read because it's not a public record.
Yeah.
Well, they're actively working on the land, so I don't see them giving it up in the next, how many ever months.
I think that, and the only reason I say that.
Using it to work on, I'm sorry.
Right. And I'm not, I didn't even mean the legal expert on this. The only reason I say that is because I think that's how River Valley killed their solar farms because the people didn't take the extension in time and they didn't think they had to. And River Valley lost their minds and they all protested. And it went before the siding board. It went before the siding board because they came here.
You're talking about Pleasant.
Pleasant. No, it was out at Tri Rivers. Was that Pleasant?
Well, they, they had meetings there, but it was for the Pleasant.
Yeah, and so, well, Pleasant.
I don't know anything about River Valley.
Yeah, and that's where the meeting was, but it was, the location wasn't Pleasant.
Right, the siding board was there though. I was at the meeting.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, with you and the prosecutor. We were all at the meeting.
So if we already got past this, we could keep them from building the solar panels out there?
Yeah.
Do you?
Current, currently the law says that. I mean.
How many acres is it? Do you know, Josh?
A lot.
If you had an estimate, what estimate?
Eighty on one side maybe and a hundred and, I think it's total two hundred acres, maybe.
Two hundred acres total.
Hundred and twenty on the other maybe.
Pass it.
So if we.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I, I believe I'm still on the Ohio Power Siding. Uh, yeah, county commissioners roped me in to being the local represent, under the new law, local representative. And then Dave Schroed is representative for the township trustees. And so we voted on the, the one that was gonna go in Pleasant. It was gonna be like shoehorned in between a whole bunch of houses and everything. So basically, there's, I, there's no. So, basically, there's, I, there's no application for any sole in the land you're talking about, I think you're talking about the Roberts land, there is no application right now for a sole. So, if this got in, if this was passed, it would be in effect. And if it was over, if somebody actually tried to do something, if it was under 50 megawatts, the city would have control. But if it's over 50, then it's the power siding board, but I just can't see, I mean, I can't see, you know, anybody really interested in doing that.
Let me say this for the record, because this came up...
There's not enough land, there's not enough land either for 50 megawatts.
This came up in conversation. It is probably advisable, before we do anything on this specific issue, considering, you'd be hard-pressed to say it's not aimed at specific parcels' ground, at least from my opinion, everyone else may have their own. But it would be good to have, you know, the landowners, Wes Roberts, now, I'm under the impression, and have been told, and so has council, that they want to sell it, they don't want the lease on it. So, I think it would be right to inform them, "Hey, if you've got concerns and you really do want solar, well, there's other people saying you don't, and the lease is going to be released, and you're fine with that." That was in the paper, I think, yesterday, maybe, some quote. So, I don't think I'm stepping on the landowner's toes if they don't want a solar farm anyway.
Right.
Might be doing them a favor, but it's probably good that they formally be told, invited, and say, "Hey, you got concerns? If you don't, then we'll do what we need to do."
And I agree, and very preliminary thought process, that it sounds, at least for the larger portions, like, so like, for business portions, it would be easier for the zoning, for zoning purposes, to limit the acreage that could be used, instead of trying to pick out a place where it can, where it can go. Because there's only certain places in the city that it would even be feasible to go if you're going to put it anywhere. But then, in those districts, is there enough acreage to make this something that the city would feel comfortable with?
Just keep in mind that every acre that's covered with solar plant will probably be industrial ground and inside the city limits. I wouldn't want them...
Anywhere.
Anywhere, not as a primary purpose. If a company comes and says, "Hey, we want some power off of something other than the grid for some reason," they've brought jobs, they've brought some benefit. But just as a primary purpose to run some data center down in Marysville, I, I'm not impressed with that. I mean, the energy's not staying here, it's moving all through the grid, all through the country.
So, if the solar development brought jobs to the area, we'd be hunky-dory with that? Because if the solar brought jobs to do solar...
If they made solar panels here, we'd be happy.
Right, we'd be okay. We'd probably be like, "You put them anywhere, make them here." But the, I, so, I don't have a personal problem with solar. I don't, the residential uses, I think, is going to be more of a concern, like, we're , limitations on that for me personally. But I agree with Josh, I would rather see the acreage that we have, that is prime real estate, because of the development that's going on with 23, especially supposedly, ODOT, who left? It's going to be very, very, very important to have that land. Just as a side example, I went home to Troy, to Miami County, last Monday, and when I was driving back, I came up County Route 25A to get 75. Now, after a certain point, which is they put a hospital, after a certain point, County Route 25A is dead. Nothing is there. It is farmland, until now, where they have put a business park by the highway, that if you would have told me when I lived there was going in, I would have told you it was insanity that you would do that, and there is a brand-new sheets, there's like an actual service station, like, old-school service station is due to open across the street, that cars come off the highway, get their car serviced, there's a car wash, there's all kinds of industrial stuff going out there, that if you would have told me this, I said, "You're nuts," because it's farmland, and the farmers are never going to do that because it's always hopping farmland, too. So, to Josh's, I guess to Josh's point, never say never with the land that's there because where it is and what they've done out there, just infrastructure-wise...
I'd rather...
In five years, it could be hopping.
I'd rather it stay green right now and turn into a solar park, though. If it turns into a solar park, it'll be that forever.
Correct. What I'm saying is in five, I agree with you, but in five years, if the solar farm doesn't go in, in five years, that could be industrial, that could be jobs for Marion, like Josh is saying, so. Josh's theory is now valid because I've signed off on it, so we're...
Ken?
Yeah, I mean, if you do this citywide and can't have this in I-1 or I-2, it doesn't just affect, there's other I-2 properties, just, you're not just picking on Roberts. So, I don't think there's any reason. And if you allow it in I-3, which now the only parcel is the limestone quarry, people always have the right to ask this commission and council to rezone the I-3. So, you haven't taken their rights away. They always have that right, especially if the city annexes something, some property, let's say, maybe next to the landfill or something, and wants to, you know, has something on the landfill and wants to have a little bit more, I don't know. So, I wouldn't worry about, you know, taking anybody's rights, rights away, because as long as you allow it in the I-3...
I think it's the appearance. I mean, people are going to say it's directly aimed at them.
Well, you're doing residential, too, you're doing residential.
And I understand.
And then the company, if a company has, if a company wants to come in and have a manufacturing place and have their own solar panels for themselves, they're fine, right?
That's kind of still being discussed.
Okay, well, you should have, fine, for their use, they should be fine.
We're differentiating between primary versus accessory use.
Yeah, right, that would be accessory for them.
One thing I will point out, in Pleasant Township, when they first, when the solar company first started to look at that site, the reason they picked Pleasant, they didn't have zoning specifically for the solar, and so they were willing to work with them, but they were, they made it 49.5, so it was just under, megawatts just under the part that had to go to the power siding board because they thought it might be easier to deal with the township than it was the power siding board. Then in the end, Pleasant decided, you know, "We're not as sophisticated as the power siding board, we're just going to say no altogether," because by the time they started making rules, they weren't really comfortable, and they really didn't want it anyway. So, then that's when they then said, "Oh, you know what, we really made it 50 some," you know, and so they had simultaneously submitted one then to the power siding board, and that's why that one was kind of grandfathered in, because they were kind of playing it both ways. So, that's the only downside of not having a rule, either you, you know, you prohibit it or you allow it in some place, but they may think that it's easier to deal with the city than it is the state, and try to adapt to be that back door. That's why you should have some sort of regulation.
Any further discussion at all? No? I guess it'll give you food for thought. Do a little dress effects meeting and see if we can nail something down defensively.
Yeah, I'd like to see that the landowner for this particular choice, Calhoun, come in.
I think it's fair, he's the one that we're aware that there's a lease, and it's fair that he'd be able to address the issue, and either he's in support of it or he's not, but I just inform.
Yeah, I think it alleviates anybody saying that he wasn't given the chance to talk, which is always good.
I do have one question for you guys. Are you interested in the special housing level? If you want it to be a neighborhood, a mainyard?
I'd be in favor of only Ruse.
Oh, Ruse, that way we don't, we eliminate the central yard.
Well, I don't want them...
Just because if not, you're just going to hear about it constantly in here.
I kind of think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody can put them on the roof as an accessory, but...
In your backyard?
Yeah.
Why do you put it in the backyard?
So, your roof or your backyard, I would have no problem with. Side yards, front yards, no. Because we have, we have zoning now about what can go in your front yard, and I don't want to get in here one day where somebody says, "Well, I thought it would be with my fence, and since my solar panel's only three and a half feet off the ground, I'm good." And it's like, no, you're, you're, it serves no, it serves no purpose, and no.
Let me ask, is that something that everyone can agree with? No side yards, no front yards, backyard only and roof?
It sounds like you're treating it almost like just any other accessory structure, that it has to have a setback, it has to be not in the front yard, and in fact, a side yard kind of gets included because most side yards are teeny-tiny. Maybe if you have an entire side lot added on to your lot, then, okay, maybe that, but...
Is there a limitation you want to put on an existing business or a new business that would like to supplement its power supply with solar panels or et cetera?
Not currently. I can't think of any.
I don't really have heartburn over that because generally, a company wants room for expansion and won't eat up a bunch of its ground with, that seems that way.
It'll take up their parking as well, I mean, they'll put it on their roof. It'd be logical, in my opinion. Oh, that's a good...
Garage and stuff, you can only take up 25% of the...
Right. But that's a good point, Christian, that... So, in front yards, we do not permit accessory structures, but we do permit accessory parking. So, if you want to let people put solar over parking, you might say, you might want to say that you can do it over a parking lot, regardless of which spot it's located in, you know, relative to the building, or not.
A lot of big cities put solar panels on top of parking structures.
Yeah, yeah, shade the cars, get a little bit of juice.
Hard work, you can throw a small solar panel on top of it. I'm sure getting into the weeds now, if you have a solar panel in your shed, but, yeah, and I've seen a lot of big cities do that, they put solar panels on top of parking structures to generate power, or whatever.
You don't want it in the front yard.
No.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, again, if, if you want to put it on top of your parking structure, if you're going to run a commercial parking structure, fantastic, because then that would be investment in downtown Marion, and you're closing in a parking lot, so...
Why would it have to be downtown Marion? Why can't it be somewhere else?
Because I don't know of any place that's going to put a structure up.
Five years from now, person, we don't have to...
Well, five years from now, I may not be here.
Hey, I'm here to give you overtime, all right?
So, but, I mean, yeah, it's food for thought, I mean, I don't have a problem with that scenario, it's just, I personally being asked, "No, I don't want it in your front yard or your side yard," just because, for the simple purpose of, a Marion lot is not the standard size. If we were having Dublin-sized lots, okay, we can have that, we can have that conversation, but you have people who fight over six feet of driveway. They're not going to be okay with giving up three feet of their side yard, and they're staring at a solar panel. Right, right, exactly. So...
Or have to meet that setback anyway.
Right.
Well, I think everybody's, Brandon, no.
Is there any discussions at all?
So, the solar thing was the last thing, but then I also had potential ways to amend mandatory parking minimums.
Oh, that's...
If it's too late to come on the agenda...
That can come back next time.
That can come back, think about that.
Okay. Not going to do that, but all right.
Is there anything else to be brought for this committee?
Well, could I just, less than two minutes, last month, we were just brought here, we started going through the zoning code.
Did anybody not get one?
Yeah, did anybody not, we want the members of any county, members that come to get thrown and then have a map in it, so we can go through this thing. And the last time we just started listening, some things needed to be changed, so, that's all.
I didn't, I have mine.
We got time next month.
Thank you.
You want, I can take copies to the zoning committee? I can take copies to the zoning committee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Law, it looks like you want to say something.
I just have one quick announcement. Has everyone voted for Marion this week?
No.
Okay. Are you, okay, does everyone know about the Strongest Town Contest?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to put out, please spread the word, put up posters.
Is that the new version of the Strongest Town Contest?
Yeah.
You know, for Marion, yeah, I think that's a good way, I think that's a good way of looking at it, yeah. Keep it scrappy.
For the old fungo.
So, before we take off, like, you guys have a process that the vacation that I used, I think, got about, or, or like, just to get, you guys in contact? Me, you know, that meeting is, and...
Yes.
The process is starting.
Yeah, I'll have to contact the law director in the morning.
Thank you for handling that.
And if you don't hear anything in a week, then blow up Mr. Pollard's phone.
I'll give you my card so you can holler at me. The next meeting will be the second Tuesday in April.
Mr. Pollard, can you send a certified letter?
They're always the second Tuesday every month.
Wes Roberts.
Says April.
I have zoning meeting next month. Can you get his address? Mark Sales, the...
No.
No, I don't.
I don't know, but we can get it.
Do you need a motion to adjourn? You need a motion to adjourn?
I do. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
A motion to adjourn.
Aye.
The name is.
Thank you, guys.
How are you? Nothing, nothing is happening. Somebody moved in today, and there was a cop across the street, which is why I was late, and I don't know what that was. I wish I...
Good deed, y'all.
Thank you.
It's going to be...
That was fun.
This is what we talk about.
No, in a business district, we're not going to limit the districts.
I agree, I didn't want, I didn't want to... I think yes, and reports, let them be, that's going to be the easiest way down.
Yeah. Limit the hand.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
We wouldn't be able to say...
That would really impact our problems.
If they jump 100 acres of the state, 50, 1,000 acres, no one has that. If they can't decide, that would be amazing.
Right now, you've got a real...